Welcome to the Board of Library Trustees Special Meeting, Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. I now call this meeting to order at seven oh two. Recently, regional and local elected and appointed bodies have been subjected to disruptive racist verbal attacks by anonymous callers during virtual public meetings. The city of Mountain View is fully committed to racial, religious, and cultural equity and justice as we strive to create a welcoming, safe, and inclusive community for all. This advisory body commission welcomes respectful and non-threatening public comments regarding matters over which the advisory body commission has jurisdiction. Comments deemed otherwise pursuant to the Council Code of Conduct and the Government Code may be grounds for immediate terminating, immediately terminating a speaker's comment period. All votes will be taken by roll call. Now ask the library director to receive.
Chairperson Kristin Higaki. Vice Chair Kalid Mbasta.
Present.
Board member Eric Neerlik.
Present.
Board member Sharon Sue.
Present.
Board member Barbara Lee Sin Bear.
Minutes approval. Minutes for the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting have been delivered to board members. If there are no corrections or additions, a motion is in order to remove these minutes. Public comment. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on an item on the minutes approval? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press pound nine on your phone. Library director will display the timer on the screen.
Minutes from last one.
I move we approve the minutes from February.
All second.
Chair Higaki. Vice Chair Mbasta.
Approved.
Board member Neerlik.
Approved.
Board member Sue.
Approved.
Board member Lee Sin Bear.
Approved.
Oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the board of any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. If there appears to be a large number of speakers, speaking time may be reduced to no less than one point five minutes. State law prohibits the board from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on non-agenda items? Any comment on any?
By me?
Yeah.
I've been coming to the library for years and years and years. The laws that specifically are being that I've noticed that like safety issues. You know, it's like, uh, it does that's like when, when, uh, things regarding safety come up, it's like kind of like distracts attention from all the positive, you know, that happens and like I like to comment that, you know, I try to cooperate that I have had that actually issues around me, but to like be aware that, you know, not to be thrown off by like safety either breaches or safety issues, but that's like to solve to more to many people, it's like a minimum, you know, safety. Yeah, especially in like a public library like this. And, uh, yeah, that's what I wanted to comment about. And I usually do try to like, uh, be cooperative and then you know, like whether it has to be to leave or like know that that talk to like safety personnel or do what it was the police department, but I've seen like come and go with different staff persons through the years. But yeah, it's just, uh, you know, but I've noticed that to many that is like a minimum safety. Uh, if anything around safety, especially like in the children's area, like it's just kind of throws all persons off. And, uh, yeah, like on those issues, like I didn't want to comment that I've spoken to like, for example, uh, staff persons regarding those issues, like the safety issues. Like not my personal, personal safety, but I I've noticed that, uh, persons coming to library that, you know, it's like, um, and issues regarding safety, like, uh, everyone's like attention kind of brewing. Not just one day, but you know, yes, that's what I wanted to comment about. So personally, and I have like, I've never really been visited at a board meeting. Or like I've encountered some of you. It's, uh, yeah, I've been here for years and years. And just also wanted to say thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, on to the next one. There are no donations. Situations in the business. Then we will go on to new business.
Okay. Good evening. Uh, my name is Amanda Rotella. I am the Acting Economic Vitality Manager. And I'm also, uh, sitting on kind of a team of staff that is facilitating this council work plan process for the fiscal years twenty-five, twenty-seven. And so every two years, the council puts together their strategic priorities and identifies projects for the council work plan. Uh, we are currently in the fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-five work plan and it'll, which will end in June. So the council work plan is is really focused around these strategic priorities, which were identified as part of the last council work plan process. And it on at the February twenty-fifth meeting, the council reaffirmed that these are still their strategic priorities. And so all of the work plans from the past, all of the projects from the past work plan and for the upcoming work plan, uh, all missile into one of these strategic priority areas. See, kind of take a look at those. And historically, um, council work plan, work plan products have had anywhere between forty and seventy projects in them. And they have been incredibly robust, but there has been difficulty in not only implementing, but even starting all of the projects that are on that work plan. In addition to this, as is sort of shown in this iceberg graphic, you can see how sort of city priorities are kind of broken up. And so specifically looking at economic vitality, for example, you have above the water line, those council work plan priorities. Then you have sort of time limited strategic initiatives that take place. And then it's estimated that about eighty-five percent of staff time is spent on things below the water line. So all those ongoing operations and programs. So in addition to these very robust work plans, we have a pretty full staff, uh, sort of staff work plan, the things that we're working on. And so to further emphasize sort of the, the limited capacity for some of these um, other projects and initiatives. With all that in mind, council has decided to take a quality over quantity approach to this year's work plan, and they are targeting to have between ten and fourteen uh, projects as part of that work plan. And really, um, are, what we are working on is sort of right sizing those priorities and really making an achievable work plan within the two-year, uh, the two-year timeline. And so to orient you to where we are in the process, so a council subcommittee met at the end of last year to really develop our current process and out and identify the quality of the process, our quality, quality over quantity focus. And, uh, council met in January to sort of agree that that was the process they wanted to take. And then just last month, February twenty-fifth, council members ahead of time submitted three projects, um, project priorities. And then at the council meeting, the council went through and discussed all the items and agreed to move all of them forward for this next level of input from advisory bodies such as yourselves and staff analysis. So this will all come back to council, um, April twenty-second. Uh, and the work plan will ultimately be adopted in June with the budget. So timeline in terms of our, our direct next steps. So currently underway, uh, staff is doing an analysis, uh, with the criteria that you see on the screen. All the departments are having an opportunity to weigh in on all of these pieces. And then, um, also we are, as I said, meeting with all the advisory bodies. So you can see where April twenty-second will be the next sort of step in that process where we'll bring all of the feedback that we received from advisory bodies and, and staff analysis. And then, as I said, in June twenty-fourth, we'll see the final adoption. So our process today, so, uh, hopefully all of you have had an opportunity to review the project list. I believe it was attachment two in your, in your agenda packet. And, um, I asked that you share your three projects. They don't need to be in order, not, you know, first, second, and third. We're just looking for the top three and I'll be taking notes and tallying those. I'm also happy to take feedback. If you have specific feedback on any of the items, I'm taking note of that as well. And we'll be summarizing all the maintenance that we hear. And then, as I said, we'll be taking all this feedback back to council, uh, for the April twenty-second, uh, council study session. So, um, Madam Chair, I, in my past meeting, I sort of took questions on each of these, but we ended up kind of discussing all of them. So if you're comfortable, I might just go through the list and provide a little background on each of them, if that seems okay. We, I kind of said, oh, you know, onesie twosies, and then I ended up talking about all of them. So if that works for you, I'll go through each of them and just provide those.
Could have been.
Questions. I was like, I need more details. Okay, guys, then I'll, I'll go ahead and just jump in and, and give you a little bit of, uh, background. So, uh, project number one, uh, this is revolving around the Stevens Creek Trail. Um, so this is an existing project and, uh, this is a project to extend the trail southward towards Sunnyvale. Um, and is really focused on increasing access. So the completion of the larger project is beyond the two-year work plan timeline. Um, so the sort of specificity of this one is really around funding agreements and, um, design engineering is sort of the goal to achieve in the next two years. So it's moving that project sort of incrementally forward. Uh, project number two is around, uh, facilitating low and moderate income homeownership. Um, also looking at, as it says, barriers to condominium development. Again, this is an existing project. And emphasis is really on entry level, first-time homeowners. And the city really hasn't seen a ton of condominium development. Um, and so it's really looking at ways barriers that might exist, things that are within the city control to facilitate more, more of that condominium development, um, going forward. R-three zoning. So R-three zoning is sort typically refers to that medium density housing. And so this is, it's sort of like one step up from single-family housing. It's focusing on sort of the multiple units, multiple units on a single lot. We're not talking about large-scale development projects, but those townhomes and condos, um, small apartment buildings. Uh, and so looking at updating those standards to facilitate more of that. Project number four is around natural gas and has been rolled in to include part of the decarbonization strategy. This would further support the city's sustainability and climate resiliency strategic priority. And, um, we currently have a goal to reach carbon neutrality by the year twenty-fourty-five, and this project would add a goal to stop the flow of natural gas at the same time. And it would be around creating a plan specifically around that. Project number five, uh, this one is an existing project and in related to our city, the city's community for all strategic priority. Um, and this project is, this project is specifically around some of our legislative, uh, legislative priorities and would be looking, uh, to kind of take action and, and, uh, in that way, um, related to, uh, race equity and inclusion. Uh, six is access to broadband citywide. And so this is like, uh, an existing project. And the council actually had a study session on this, uh, just last month, February twenty-fifth, and discussed the broadband's needs and, uh, assessment and gap analysis. And so this project would be sort of the initial steps of addressing those findings of the study and, um, which could include the development of a conceptual broadband, broadband network design, um, and then addressing those needs and potentially improve access to high-speed internet citywide. So sort of bringing some priority to that process and, and moving it forward at sort of more accelerated rate. Um, seven is implement smart water meters. Uh, so this project would design and implement, uh, installing smart, smart water meter systems. Um, and this allows for remote reading of what of those meters. Um, so you know, we have sort of the dial ones or someone has to get out of the car and go and read the, the meter. This would allow someone to be driving by a smart device and pick that up. It also allows for leak detection, which is really helpful, can let homeowners know, hey, we're seeing a really high, uh, use of water, you know, take a look, there might be a leak. Um, and so, uh, this would be, um, we did receive a grant from Valley Water to replace the old dialed meters with smart meters. And so inclusion of this project in the work plan would further prioritize and, and speed up, um, and potentially expand implementation. Uh, number eight is around, uh, placing an amendment, uh, to the city charter on the twenty-twenty-six ballot, as well as exploring revenue measures. Um, and so this would just be around modernizing language, removing outdated provisions and cleaning up the city charter. Um, and was also discussed potentially looking at another revenue measure. Um, as the city's, um, budgeted forecast over the next couple of years is really seeing, um, you know, revenues sort of stay the same and costs go up. So looking to address some of that projected, uh, budget challenges that we have in the future. Project number nine, um, this one is around making amendments to the municipal code. Um, and this would be around updating the code to make it more flexible or more enforceable where needed. Um, and this would be really, uh, there aren't any specific, uh, changes that are in here. It's really about prioritizing and carving out time for staff to really uh, do this work of, of going through the code and, and really, uh, providing the updates that are needed. Uh, project number ten. So this is around design standards. So this would create design standards and, and set expectations sort of earlier in the process for developers so that we could move projects through the review process more quickly. Uh, this project is really intended to support well-planned developments, um, and really helping to provide, uh, clear standards, standards earlier in the process. Uh, number eleven is around an autonomous vehicle shuttle. And this would, the, the, the focus of this one is finding a way to have, um, an autonomous shuttle that would complement our current community shuttle um, and explore, you know, using autonomous vehicles for mass transit options within the city. All right. Number twelve, uh, downtown vacant storefront program and with display and pop-up program. Um, and this is looking at a way for us to activate vacant storefronts in the downtown. Um, you could look at, in sort of a variety of capacities, partnering with different organizations, potentially like the, uh, Mountain View Historical Association or art, art groups. Um, and so creating a program around being able to do that activation. Uh, thirteen, this is exploring funding opportunities and develop strategies to improve the overall condition of the city's, uh, street pavement. So, uh, you can see it, it's looking to increase the pavement condition index to seventy-one. We're currently at sixty-eight, just so you have a, a sense of what, where that gap is. And fourteen, uh, this is updating council policies, templates, and other documents. Um, this would be about reviewing and updating outdated standards, uh, to help really the organization be more efficient. And similar to number nine, it's about carving out the time for staff to be able to do that. Uh, fifteen is creating a framework to support volunteer organizations working with the city. Uh, this one's looking at providing clear guidelines and a framework for volunteer organizations. Um, and this would include groups that interact and collaborate with staff regularly, um, and looking to find ways to really streamline process, uh, for staff so that they can more effectively partner with groups, with these groups. And then lastly, the pickleball interim, uh, pickleball plan. Uh, this would initiate a short-term solution to increase pickleball access, um, while the city continues to work on a feasibility study to just, to determine, uh, more permanent pickleball court opportunities. Um, some of the things that were mentioned were expanding hours of use, um, you know, and or exploring other facilities. So there's a, a couple of different ways that that would could go. Okay. And with that, happy to take questions and then I've jumped into.
So I have two questions, unlinked to each other. When we give you our top three, uh, to what extent should we or should we not consider potential Supreme Court actions that may invalidate something?
Um, great question. So that'll be part of the analysis that is happening at the staff levels. We're looking at sort of the, any potential legal implications and need for further, further exploring, sort of, yeah, bringing in the legal team, the city attorney's office. Um, I would say, uh, if it's a priority for you, I'll, and if you'd like to provide that feedback, I'll take tho- those notes down. Um, but certainly, uh, we would be looking to, we would be looking to do that analysis and have projects move forward only that would not be subject to potential undermining.
That makes sense. And, uh, so thank you. And then my second question is on some of these, are some of them already, there's already substantial progress and others are more like just starting with the first document, like, like, for example, for eleven, have you evaluated the shuttle space and are there some companies that are being looked at or, you know, I could go through others as well, but just kind of broadly, like, are some in progress and some not?
Some of them are in progress. I think there are about five that are existing and the rest are brand new. And so we would be at the, you know, autonomous vehicle, uh, shuttle, that's a, that's a brand new project that we proposed. So we'd be at, you know, day one looking to do that research and analysis. Um, for the projects that are existing, I, I sort of mentioned this, uh, in a couple of them. If they are already existing by adding them to this work plan, they happen at a more prioritized and accelerated rate.
I think one, basically one through six were existing. Comments correctly.
I believe so. I think we, we have a little bit of progress started on seven, um, just because we've received a grant on that one already. And I can just say, number twelve, economic, the economic development team has done a lot of thinking about this, but it would be, um, and, and we have, we have looked at ways to explore, um, do some exploring ways to activate. I will say just as a, a side note, since that's what I'm very familiar with, our biggest challenge there is getting, uh, property owner participation. Yeah. And so we'd need to explore some ways to, to get that voluntary participation. But yeah, I think generally, um, you are correct.
And are you looking just for our votes or commentary or?
Uh, happy to take both. Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll be tallying up. So we'll, would definitely like a definitive one through three, but, um, but certainly commentary and feedback, uh, is helpful as well.
Do you tell me a little bit more about number fifteen and, and anything about like kind of coming out of the pandemic? Or you say that it's, it's pretty, it stayed the same?
Yeah, I can't speak to that. I don't know if, actually, if you can provide a library context on your work with volunteers. Has it changed? Volunteers, it hasn't changed a whole lot, although in my update, later this evening, I will give an update about teen volunteers, which is, which we weren't having many before the pandemic. So that will change. So, um, our volunteers, we probably have about the same amount we had pre-pandemic. I will say, you know, in addition to library, we have our community services department has a lot of volunteers that either want to work, you know, up cleaning at parks or working with specific, um, native animals, uh, and providing some, you know, like counts and whatnot. Um, and so this would really be about trying to find ways to just make it much clearer for people to participate, um, and for for our actual volunteer groups as a whole to participate. And it, I think up until now, it's, there's been some, it was not a framework that goes across the entire city. And so it makes it really easy, no matter who you're, what department you're interacting with. This is the process. These are the requirements. And so doing some, uh, providing that framework and standardization.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just, um, I'm new to this, new to the board, so this may be a dumb question, but I assume we're giving, um, feedback as board members rather than as just Mountain View residents, so that we're looking at through the, the library board relationship to these priorities?
It's a great question. And, and it's a question that came up in my, the last meeting I was at. So, um, very good question. Yes, we'd love for you to wear your, um, your board member hat. Uh, there will be opportunities if you had some private citizen, um, feedback you'd like to provide, welcome you to attend the April twenty-second meeting to share that. Yeah, that's a great question.
So Ms. Eric mentioned some, these were our, our carry-on from before. So like the broadband, what, can you share more of the status of what happened? I couldn't find it in, in the docs here on what happened from twenty twenty-three to twenty-twenty-five for the exploring, expanding broadband?
Yeah. So there was that feasibility study. I don't have the details of that one, um, but it, it's, it was looking at what are those barriers to, uh, to, to broadband, um, being able to be expanded citywide. Um, you know, at the council meeting, uh, there was a community member who, who was from the school system that talked about, you know, uh, kids during the pandemic, you know, families not being able to afford internet. And so this being a way to really, um, yeah, make, I make access to affordable internet for more people across the community. But, uh, you, I, I don't, I wasn't there for the study session on the study session on the twenty-fifth, so I don't have specific details.
And is there any more quantifiable way? Cause right now it says like expand access. But I feel like that's a bit big and I don't know how much impact that's really, what the target is.
Yeah. So one of the challenges about where we are in the process is that, um, so really sort of the initial ideas proposed by council and really the, the specificity that'll come around then, uh, will come from feedback that we receive from you. So, you know, uh, specific to that language, if there's something specific you'd like to see around broadband, that's something that I would take down. Uh, because the actual full scoping of these is sort of yet to come. So these are still, uh, a little bit more broad ideas, which does make it a little more challenging, uh, for you to provide it for them. But sort of, uh, the concept of expanding access and to be determined what that act, you know, the specific details of that.
There was some more information on that one, on the city site that went into some work that had been done to overlay areas of the community that have access to different types of services. And a lot of the community has Comcast. Um, some have fiber, AT&amp;T, and the maps were all laid out there, but they are, were doing some overlay work and it appeared that the areas that have the least access and the least flexible access, they, they laid out all of the, um, cost structures for the various options that you could uh, have. If you've got T-Mobile or if you've got AT&amp;T, what you could pay and what your upload and download speeds would be with the various plans. And then they sort of overlaid that over some of the maps and they showed that the people in the low-income areas had much less opportunity and access. And they were trying to make sure that everybody met at least the California standard for upload-download minimums on that. Which this is not my expertise area, but my husband looked at it and he said, well, this would, you know, what are they trying to guarantee? Are they trying to guarantee you can do your homework from home? Or are they trying to guarantee that you can watch Netflix, you know, multiple Netflix? So there, you know, there's questions about levels and, and access that way. But, um, Tracy might be able to tell us what the library relies on. Is this the, um, California's?
So this is separate from the library. So the library, we, we, uh, the California State Library has a grant that we implemented eight years ago. It's called, it's through the SCENIC Network. CalBren is the organization to get cheaper broadband for public libraries throughout the state. So we're on this. So our network is different than the city's, um, because we're, uh, hooked up with this. So, um, it's, it's basically public libraries getting in public. It's, it's basically public libraries getting in, in public app, in internet and wifi as reduction costs. So this is completely separate. Um, what we have for the library is just offered to the public libraries through the state library. But you summarized it while I was at the study session, but that was a good, uh, summary. Of, um. For the city of Mountain View, it's basically the connections to households and so forth. And like Amanda said, um. Another community, community members talked about the pandemic where. You know, there were households saying, you know, all the school was online and some households didn't. You know, have that. So what, what can we do going forward if that were to happen again? But it brought out the, um. Inequity issues in our city.
I think that same community members talked about having to decide between internet and, and basic, you know. Necessities and, and that there was a real cost. Yeah, challenge there. It was very burdensome.
Yeah. There was an element to the, the city apparently has an aging system. That is loo- looking like it's going to need replacement and is not supported the way it was. And it was somehow Comcast related. And I don't remember the details on that, but there. That the city was going to have to be looking at. The infrastructure and then they got into the connectivity of, um, traffic signals. And how few are connected. Currently and are manageable on the connected system. So it seems to cover. A range from household to the whole sort of city. Connection of, of how we're looking at that going forward.
That. And so. With encompass, so expanding would be looking at all of these. If we, um, we explore, exploring that further.
And probably whether or not we, we are thinking ahead to a. Disaster proof system in the sense that if the cells all go down, do we have a wireless mesh of some sort that is localized? For the city that would. You know, stay up. So we would at least throughout the city. Have, have good emergency communication and, um. Internet, but I don't know what the, the thinking is on that so far.
I looked up the summary report. It's very well of the website. I mean, it's just saying like, we need fiber, we need plan for fiber. Wireless to fill in the gaps. It's going to cost money. So when you figure out how to function, which is. Whether either a public, private partnership, raising a fund for it, finding a grant for it. So that, that's kind of the, sorry, but yeah, there's this. Aging infrastructure supply by Comcast that needs to be updated.
Do you like to? Do you want to go in order or, you know? How you'd like to do feedback?
And pick the top three.
And provide any feedback.
I think. If I remember before, do we all just write down our top three and then?
I think we had to choose seven last time. And now it was.
And then it was just whatever the top ones.
Yeah. But it was helpful to hear other peoples because and they're thinking about it. Because I changed, I actually changed my mind on a couple of things, heard what other people said.
So you don't want to go first.
I'm happy to go first, but I, I reserve the right to change my mind.
Yeah, I could go first.
Do you want to do seven?
No, 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 no. I was saying last time they asked for, this time they, this time they're asking for three.
Well, I mean, but.
Will we do, how many do individually do we want?
You wanted to.
Let's go three.
Okay, I'm good with that. Okay.
And then, and you don't, as a committee, have to come to a consensus. So. There's no idea needing to find your committee's top three. We're taking everybody's individually.
Uh, yes, in no particular order, I would like to choose my first is number fifteen, the framework for volunteerism and volunteer organizations. Second is updating, uh, this will be number five, updating race, equity and inclusion action plan. And the third one is. Number four, the decarbonization strategy, developing that out further. And my logic there is just, you know, if I look at this whole list. Those are just the ones that strike me as the most important and, and the best way to, uh. Prioritize out of sixteen.
Thank you.
I can go next. I will. Choose. Zero, have zero overlap. I'm going with number three, the R three zoning standards, because. Cost of living is huge and. Part of my belief in the library is access and you can't access the library, you can't live here. Similarly, six, six back, expand access to broadband. Access is important to me. And then. Not like related, but I've said in the smart water meters is really helpful. Seeing them in action in other places and like. There's in one of them. Uh, a home that I, I rent out, there's, there had the leak detection. They're like, hey. There's something happening and like something is leaking in your house. Go deal with it. I got like a text and it was like, oh, that was really helpful. You know, cause I would have gone, we would have had like a thousand dollar water bill at the end of the month and only found it then versus, which has happened to me in Mountain View. But that did not happen. So, so just. And, and I will say as a anti-vote, I vote, even though I'm a biker, I don't agree with number one or not. I don't think one is a priority because. The Stevens Street Trail Stitch will just extend it forward. It goes to Fremont Avenue and I bike along the streets that you currently have to bike along and it's. It's not dangerous. There's a bike lane. It's really not a big deal. I fight a bike there with my kids, not like kids in a trailer. It's, it's fine. Like I can, but that's not, I mean, I know it's exist apart. It's going to happen, but like that way. Even though normally I would immediately vote for the bike infrastructure, I did not vote for that.
Okay.
No, I'm just breaking rules. I wanted to explain why, even though I normally.
Slightly off brand for you, so.
I'm off brand. I always play myself.
Trade the start of the.
No pressure.
I have some overlap with Colby. I'd like to see number five. Fifteen. So, I mean, it's difficult to decide between seven and six, but I would say seven. I actually have called the city to report. Strong leaks, I suppose. And I realized I was the only person. And possi- uh, to be able to call it in based on like what I could see from my advantage point. And so. And this was like coming back from a vacation. So I was really worried as to how much water was, was spent. Um. And it was a city building too. So nobody would have. Noticed it, um, because it was, uh, dark, so.
My turn. Uh, again, no, no priority order here, um, particularly, I, um. Uh, agree with the seven, just in this. I think one of the only ones on the list that might generate some revenue, uh, or at least some cost cutting, um, for the city. To be able to do the revol- checking. The, I. Do like the framework for volunteers. Fifteen. Cause I have looked from time to time and it hasn't been particularly clear about the volunteering. Opportunities. And I would go with the sixth of broadband. If I had one more, it would be possibly the autonomous vehicle. As far as being able to get people to the library. I don't know how much we know about the current shuttle, whether or not people use that to access the library.
The community shuttle that goes around.
Right. That's, um. Do we have any information on that? So my vote is for three. To date for these zoning standards. Or, uh, I'm for. In downtown. Six.
I like a lot of these, by the way, when you guys said it, I like, oh, I'm going to want this too.
Great. Thank you. I will take all this view back, back to, back to the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, um. So would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so. The raise your hand button issue or press comment on your phone, library director will display it on the screen.
The only member of the public that's number, the board of the trustees, I guess. Uh, wish, uh. Happiness to, on working on the projects that do get chosen while the pro- and, uh, the process of choosing the projects and on, ongoing. Projects like, since it is, uh. Patty's name, it's also like, uh, like, um, the word Patrick has to do with like, um. Government is country that the, that Patrick, Patrick French, there's a lot of that. Civil work, like I wish you, uh, like, uh. Yeah, like. It's really actually happiness. Working and choosing, I think, happy parents things. I wish. Whatever that can be to you.
So just some highlights from the director's report. As you see, we've hired several staff, which is great. We just. I, uh, I think we're down to just two vacancies. The. Yeah, hopefully we'll have an announcement by the next meeting, hopefully for our library security services guard position. So we're getting there. We're getting our positions included. And we included the state library's annual report, just so you can see the amazing numbers statewide for public libraries. And then Press Reader is, um, the online newspaper with hundreds and hundreds of newspapers, um, yeah, national, international. So hopefully you all get a chance to look at that. Um, we just picked that out recently. And the career online, um, high school, um, is going well that we included some testimonials in there. And then Saturday was multicultural festival. Um, we had a booth, but, um, it was very well attended. Luckily it did rain that day. We had a lot of visitors at our table. The library was busy inside as well. So that was, um, very exciting. Um, to do that. And. Um, you guys get the first sneak peek of, we are rolling out this week. In fact. We'll be submitting to city council to let them know about a new program. Uh, we have two regarding teens. So we are now, um. We didn't have teen volunteers for a while. Um, we're getting our vacancies filled in our division. So. Um, we have our new librarian, Renee Kitson, who was promoted to librarian. So we have one position in youth to fill or senior library assistant. But the youth team has worked really hard on putting together some volunteer opportunities for teens. So that's posted on our website. And then this week we'll be rolling out. A program for teens called Amplify Teen Voices. And it's a program for teens who want to share their interests and passions with an audience. And if they have a skill that they would like to teach to an audience. Um, that our librarians will work with them to create a library program that would be open to the public. And the participants will get the opportunity to get real world experience in, um. And program planning and presenting to a large audience. The program values our leadership, learning and growing, communication and dependability. There will be an application form to fill out, um, parental consent for, um, depending on the age. And, um, we built a webpage. It'll be live by the end of the week. Um, and we're super excited and, and hope we get some, um. Some interested folks. I believe our librarians will be presenting. What we're, we've been doing, uh, including this program to the youth advisory council committee. Um, in April, the, um, that board. Um, so they'll be presenting all the things that we're planning and doing and including summer reading because our. Staff are already planning summer reading, getting that ready. That's in, in less than two months. That will be starting that, believe it or not. Um, so a lot of great things going on. So more to come.
I'm so excited to hear that.
I just have one thought related to the public speaking. Uh, has there been any effort? By the library or someone else, whomever, uh, to maybe partner up with organizations like Toastmasters and others where. You know, they have a certain curriculum and content, maybe people that could volunteer, staff those events, et cetera. Just a thought, you know?
Yeah, that's a great. Thought. Look into some things and think through that idea. Oh, I did want to mention Silicon Valley Reads is in full force. There's only a couple of weeks left. Of that, um, our programs have been well attended. The next program. That we have is this Friday for, um. Tech, tech, tech take apart last month where the teens pulled apart electronics and it was standing room only. And they were lined up the door to go in to do this very, they were very excited to do that. Um. This one is. Get up real quick. The, it's not the robot. And it's, I think, our last program related. Actually tomorrow night is sewing with Fapmo and they're doing dangly robots. Which part of Silicon Valley Reads, because it's part of AI. And then Friday is. We're doing the chalk art and the think pads, the, um. Where they learn assembly and disassembly, um, but it's older, I think the older. Or for that. Um, so that's actually next Friday. Sorry, I have the date wrong. So Silicon Valley Reads, I attended the Khan Academy, um, Sal Khan did a program at the Computer History Museum. About AI and education, and that was very insightful. And he seemed to be leaning towards. Um, the benefits of AI to help teachers and that it wouldn't. You know, he doesn't foresee the AI eliminating teachers, but. Um, just using, um, AI as tools to allow teachers to have more one-on-one. And classroom discussion and development with students where AI could perhaps help with some of the tasks to. Be able to increase the teachers to have build relationships with the students. So that was. Great to hear, um, sort of, um, the, the benefits of, of that. But it was a sold out program was. It was really interesting. And I see it's on the Silicon Valley Reads website to view, because it was. On Zoom. So you can view all of the big programs on their Silicon Valley Reads website. Um, those are brilliant.
Tracy, was he talking about? Any partnerships with, I know they, they've got the Khan Mego.
Right. He talked a little bit about that, but, um.
And I don't know if they're doing anything to, I know you, you've already got learning, um, support. Things that are on the. Library.
Yeah, we have some learning tools such as brain fuse, like tutoring.
Brain fuse and the other, um, things that you have. But that since he's somewhat local.
Yeah.
Whether or not there'd be any opportunities to, uh, test something like that with a library link. For people not, if he's interested in that or.
As you see, the, in the report, we had the. San Jose State Library, um, department here with their robot Rosie, some of the photos. And that was an insightful program as well. So a couple more weeks of this, of Silicon Valley Reads.
Seems to have been very, very popular.
Yeah. Yeah, timely topic, definitely.
All right, public comment, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? Is anybody on the line still? No. Have the comments? Uh, agenda setting, information point.
So next month, we will have the presentation, library, marketing and communication. Our, our communication library, library, Katie Hall, will be presenting on what we're doing. Laid into communications and marketing, some of our new programs and ideas related to that. Um, and then either in April or hopefully, you know, later than May. Our city attorney's office ha- um, has a, is with us to update our behavior policy. And so we'll be bringing that to the board for discussion and approval on that in either April or hopefully May at the latest. And then I will just give an, an announcement that the, and Amanda was here. She's, um, the group of city managers, office staff are continuing to. Um, bring their, that presentation to the boards in the next week. And then April eighth is the budget, the city council meeting will, where they'll discuss the budget. Um, for next year, um, they'll have their first discussion. The city manager will bring the recommended budget. All the departments have submitted their requests and the city manager is currently compiling all the department's requests. And she will bring, um, the recommended budget along with the work plan items on April eighth. And then the city council will discuss and, um, have a work session on the budget. And then there's, I believe, one other meeting in June. And then the last, uh, city council meeting in June will adopt the, the budget for fiscal year. Times flying, or we know it, summer will be here.
Public comment? German, the meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-five, yeah? Next library, Board of Libraries, this meeting will be held on Monday, April twenty first, which is invited at seven eighteen.